Good evening. Welcome to the Grand Blaine Township meeting for February 3rd. We'll call tonight's Planning Commission meeting open with the roll call and pledge of allegiance. We haven't done the sign-in sheet yet, have we?
It's going down.
All right, well, we're gonna do it this way then.
Hugo.
Mike Yancho, Dolores Clovier, Jay Hoffman, myself, Larry Anderson, Ben Spanderski, Paul Bush.
Jill.
Jill, what's next? All right, thank you, Jill. And, of course, Jeremy Baker and Attorney David Ladd. All right, now pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. At this time, I'd like to ask for approval or amendments to the agenda from our January 6th meeting.
Chairman, I'll make a recommendation or a motion for approval of the agenda as it's written.
We have approval. Supported by Mr. Bush. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the January 6th meeting minutes. I have reviewed the draft and found everything to be in order, so unless there's any comments by additional commissioners, I make a motion that we approve it as stated.
Okay. Seconded by Mike Yancho. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, public comment. Looks like we've got a pretty thin crowd here tonight. Anybody wish to address the Planning Commission from the public? Correspondence, planning, and zoning news. Everybody got that in their packet? Can you go over? Good. All right. Flexible Development, 1 and 2 districts, public hearing. Have anything to go over on that from?
Jill's gonna give a presentation on that.
You want to do that now, Jill? Sure.
Good evening, everyone. At our last meeting in January, we talked about new zoning districts, flexible development 1 and flexible development 2. It was a continuation of our conversation, I think, from the month previous where we talked kind of about an outline, generally uses that would be permitted. And we prepared the language that you looked at last month, and we made a few changes, but one of the things that we did not change that we are proposing to change now is under the special land uses for flexible developments 1 and 2, because we do have a reference that goes back to use special land uses that are permitted in the neighborhood commercial district in particular. We do allow gas stations in those districts as special land uses. They're the smaller size versus the ones that are permitted in the general commercial district. We talked about it, sort of pros and cons of it. Ultimately, I think you decided to not have those included, and we omitted that in this draft, but we were proposing to put that back in. So, under letter 19, Roman numeral 19, under special land uses, it would say special land uses in the office service, professional office, neighborhood commercial zoning districts that are not listed as permitted uses in this district, excluding automobile convenience gas stations. There was also, thanks to Ms. Colter, a note that we had listed accessory use and storage of hazardous materials as a special land use for the flexible district 2. We had it listed twice, once at the top and once at the bottom. So, we've eliminated the last one. And those were really the only changes that we had, I believe, since the version that you saw in January. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions or comments? I reviewed it. I thought it looked really good and kind of what I anticipated it being. No additional comments or questions? Something we need to approve, Jeremy? Or this to the board?
So, this will be approved, this will be a recommendation for approval to the township board?
Yeah, so although probably, there's probably not gonna be a lot of comments, but we should open and for the record, open the public hearing.
Okay. Anybody in the public wish to address the Planning Commission on this particular topic tonight? Okay. No comment? No? Okay. All right, no comment on that? We vote to send this on to the township board.
Did you want a motion? Did we have a motion to open the public hearing? Did I not hear that?
Ah, do we need a motion for that or just?
Well, I, so I think we've got it noticed on the, on the agenda, but let's, just for formality's sake, just 'cause I haven't been here for a while and I wanna muck, slow things down. If you wouldn't mind, just a motion to open and then a motion to close.
Motion open public comment.
Support.
All right, support. Once again, any public comment tonight on this topic for the Planning Commission? No public comment? Okay, we'll close. Public comment?
Motion close. Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion that we pass this document on to the township board for their approval.
I'll support it. Support, okay. We'll go with Mike Yancho's support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Can you record me as a no on that?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear your comment there.
I know, I've expressed my problems with flexible development. Got to go worry, but I realize that it's in the future land use map, and this is the logical next step, but I wanted to record my vote.
Doris, suppose? Okay.
I would ask all commissioners to speak directly into their mic closer so the audience can hear us.
Yeah, it is a little quiet. No further than that one? Brings us to new business, special land use 22-001, Tommy's Express Car Wash Auto Wash, special land use public hearing. We need to go forward with that. I believe we have the applicant here, Jeremy?
Evening, I'm Bruce Zester with Holland Engineering. I represent Tommy's Car Wash. Tommy's Car Wash, their, their big sale is they're trying to-
Excuse me, could you state your address, please?
Oh, 220 Hoover Boulevard, Holland, Michigan.
Thank you.
Tommy's Car Wash, their big claim to fame is the car wash experience, and that's what they sell. So, as you can see in your board packet, we have a very nice-looking building, and we try and landscape the site very nicely. They can go get car washes washed very quickly. We have three pay lanes so that people aren't waiting around to, to go through the car wash. They also have, on this site, I think we have 13 or 15 vacuums for people to wash their vacuums. It's a pretty straightforward site. We have a one entrance, so we go in and then a left and a right turn. We have 30 stacking spaces for the pay lanes and a quick exit. I reviewed the comments the zoning administrator made and also your engineer, and I don't see any issues with any of those comments. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Got a question regarding the layout of it, if I might ask. I like the plan, I like the layout. Typically don't put dumpsters in front of the building, and I see with this layout why it might make sense to do so. If I read the packet correctly, is the dumpster enclosure made out of steel?
The dumpster enclosure is made out of block. It'll be the same as the base of the building.
Sort of, it's concrete.
Correct.
Yes, Paul?
I just wanna make a comment. I think that question should be under number 2, item 2, site plan review. Item 1 is special land use. So, I think the applicant's done, and we don't have any questions. I would comment for the special land use.
Okay.
And then, Jeremy, do you have comments to make or?
I've got a review, if you'd like to hear it.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is special land use number 22-001 for, it's vacant land on Saginaw Street. The three parcel ID numbers, as you see in your packet, totaling 1.43 acres. Zoning as it is currently is general commercial. A couple months ago, last month, you guys approved to have that whole site changed from half residential and half commercial to all commercial. I reviewed the application, site plan, landscaping plan, and the summary of my findings is below. The items in bold require specific action by the Planning Commission. Item in italics can be addressed administratively. Proposed use on South Saginaw is to construct a Tommy's Car Wash, which includes three vacant parcels. Site proposes to construct a new 4,500-square-foot commercial building featuring an automatic drive-through car wash and 15 outside vacuums. Automobile washes, auto or self-service are regulated as special land use and require additional approval beyond site plan approval. The, under the specific standards for an automobile wash, the first one is to have only one ingress egress driveway, shall be permitted on a single street, and this item has been met. Number 2, we're adjoining a residential district, a solid fence or six-foot wall, fence or wall, shall be erected along the common lot line. Such fence shall be a continuous maintain in a good condition. Planning Commission may require landscaping, including a berm as an alternative. A fence or wall, my recommendation, a fence or wall will be required along the east side of the property line, directly behind the detention basin. It's my recommendation that a fence be put in, not a wall, due to the area of the detention basin and the surrounding properties. We've had an issue with a couple sites in the fall where they had a, in particular, the McDonald's right there on Hill Road, almost to the corner, Fenton and Hill. One of the neighbors in the residential is having a water backup issue with the retention wall that's put there. It's been there for decades when the original McDonald's was built, but he's having water being held in his property, and he doesn't have anywhere to go because the wall has a footing. My recommendation going forward is we don't require walls where they're not necessary due to soil or water runoff. The third item is all wash facilities shall be contained within enclosed building. The standard has been met. Number 4, vacuum and drying may be located outside of the building but shall not be located in the required front yard and shall be set back at least 50 feet from residential district. This standard has also been met. Number 5, all cars requiring to wait for the, to access a facility shall be provided stacking spaces fully off the street right-of-way, which does not conflict with vehicle maneuvering. Areas to access gasoline pumps or vacuums, as required in section 515. Illustrations of the required provided stacking need to be shown on the plans before final site plan will be approved. They have the numbers in your site plans, as you can see, but I'd like to see some illustrations so that way we can prove that those, that stacking numbers line up. Number 6, a traffic impact study shall be provided, and this standard has been met. Number 7, truck washes must be at least 100 feet from all property lines and entirely screened from residential uses. This standard does not apply, this is an automobile wash only. The planning department would support a recommendation for approval based on the following reasons. Number 1, the requested special land use is compatible with the surrounding land uses. And number 2, the requested special land use standards for automobile washes have been met, except for the items in number 2 and number 5. These items will need to be corrected on the plans before final site plan approval is given.
Okay. Go to public comment on that, then. We got anybody in the public who wishes to speak on this?
Again, we're technically a public hearing, so if, I don't know, if you, if you want a motion, you can, you can ask for it. If you want to just open the floor, you can do that, too.
Open the floor first, please. No comments? A motion then from the commission to support? Motion in favor? Make the motion. Ms. Hugo makes the motion? Sarah made the motion. Speaking to the mics, I guess, so we can hear each other.
I'll support it.
Motion in support? All in favor? But Paul, glad.
I wanna make sure it's written into the motion that we needed to address item 2 and 5 in Jeremy's review.
Oh, good point.
So, subject to items 2 and 5 being resolved pursuant to Jeremy's report?
Yes, sir.
Is that, you're amending the motion?
Yeah.
Ms. Hugo, is that?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Jeremy's gonna resolve all, okay. As amended?
And if you could roll call, that'd be great.
Roll call? Okay, so remember the roll call. Sarah?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Dolores?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Myself, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman, yes.
Yes.
Paul Bush? Okay. Now, we go to the site plan review, 1094, again, for Tommy's Express Car Wash. Opens that up with a presentation from you, Jeremy, or do you want the applicant?
I can give my review. It's gonna be a lot of the same information, but we'll, we'll go through it, and if there's any questions, then we'll go forward. So, this is SPR number 1094. This is for the Tommy's Car Wash, again. The site is currently vacant but was previously held by the Colonial Motel. The motel was demolished in 2008. The surrounding zoning, to the north is commercial, to the east is residential, to the south and west are both commercial. The application states that the site will be used for an automatic car wash. The site planned to indicate three lanes of stacking for a total of 30 cars. Site will also have 15 vacuums located in the front of the building. The GC District allows for automobile washes with special land use, which we just approved. As you can see, the dimensional requirements, front yard is 30, provided was 90, that's in compliance. Rear yard was 20, provided 84, compliance. Interior side yard, 10, provided 68 and 90, this is in compliance. Maximum building height is required is 30 feet. Unfortunately, the applicant didn't provide scaled elevation plans, so that is one thing that we will need to have before final site plan approval as well, so that way we can prove that the required maximum building height is under 30 feet. Parking setbacks, required 20, provided 20, rear 20, provided 45. Adjacent to residential district, all yards required is 20, 45 was provided. Elsewhere is 10 feet and provided 14 to 32 feet. Where adjoining residential district, a solid fence or wall, again, will be required. Ordinance says wall or fence, but my recommendation would be a fence, again, directly behind the detention basin. For parking, the ordinance requires two spaces plus one designated space per each employee in peak shift, plus 12 stacking spaces per bay for a fully automatic car wash. Applicant has provided two required spaces and five spaces for five employees in peak shift. One space is required to be barrier-free. The site also provides three lanes for 10, 10 lanes, I'm sorry, three stacking lanes with 10 cars in each lane for a total of 30 stacking spaces. The standard is met, but we still need to see illustrations providing that on plans. Planning Commission requires a submission of a scaled photometric plan, graphically illustrating the site lighting and illumination intensity, foot candles. At the time of the review, it was not submitted, but on the day in front of you, you have the revised photometric plan, and it is in compliance now. And number 9, a wall or fence is required, again. Again, a fence would be my recommendation, so we don't have any water runoff issues. For the landscaping, general commercial uses that abut single-family residential are required to provide buffers within the required setback between the subject site and all adjacent properties, according to the table 5104A. General commercial uses must be provided a six-foot wall or berm, screened with one canopy tree or four shrubs, one evergreen, four shrubs per 20 linear feet property line, counted upward. This is required along the east property line that abuts the R3 zoning, and this standard is met. So, if you look on your plans on the landscaping plan, this standard is already met, I'm asking that fence to be between the trees and the property line.
Okay. That's already existed?
In addition to that landscaping, a four-foot landscape screening area along the parking lot will need to be installed along Saginaw Road to block light shed before passing traffic. And it only needs to be three, four foot high, something that's hardy throughout the winter, so that way there's no light shed even through the winter time. So, something, some kind of evergreen, and Bruce and I can, with your authority, Bruce and I can, can go back and forth.
What side of the entrance did you say that would be on to block?
That'd be on the Saginaw side, in front of the parking spaces. We've had some issues in the last couple months with, over by the new Taco Bell on Hill Road as well. The gentleman that lives across the street, he called and complained that he's getting traffic lights into his yard at night. There's some landscaping there, and it is, it's a little, the landscaping area is kind of elevated, but not elevated enough to not stop the lighting. He's installed three-foot trees on his property, but it's still not enough. So, going forward, just so you know, this is gonna be one of my sticking points, so we don't ever have something like this coming up again.
Good point and good observation. Thank you.
Other issues, on page C101, please add impervious surface coverage percentage. Again, on C101, please add additional directional arrows directing traffic to the back for washing, and one directing out of the wash bay with driveline markings, just for flow of traffic, so people know they have to go to the back first. I know it's semantics, but I just think it's, should be required.
I agree.
Also, please add notice section that the owner is responsible for all maintenance to the, to the detention pond. That was one thing that I've seen in the past where it's never put on there anywhere, and then they say county's, it's county's job. County says, no, it's the property owner's job. If we start putting it on all these site plans, we don't have any issues going forward. The owner will be responsible from now on for all detention pond maintenance.
Perfect.
And then the other, the last thing, please include zoning for all the surrounding properties on page C101. The planning department would support a recommendation for preliminary approval with the understanding that the following items need to be rectified. We also need to see, provide ownership documentation, but I know that's, that's on, that's coming. The title page needs to say Grand Blaine Township and not Flint. Provide zoning for all surrounding properties. Photometric plan has been submitted now, so we can remove that. Scale elevation plans, illustrations for the stacking through the drivelines, a wall on the easterly line, four-foot screening along Saginaw Road, impervious surface coverage percentage, additional directional arrows, and a note that the owner is responsible for all maintenance to detention pond.
Okay. Start with public comment on this particular issue. Anybody have public comment for this view? Seeing none. Want to hear from the applicant on this one as well? Remember, we have some couple questions on this.
I don't have anything more to add, but like I said, I think we can address all those comments fairly easily and get that taken care of.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
To Jeremy, the photo plan has been submitted, but have you reviewed that at all to see if it's in compliance?
I have, and I have noticed that it isn't completely zero at all lot lines, and I was going to mention to the board that, and I was gonna ask Attorney Ladd, I'm glad Jill's here as well, what, what is our tolerance? Does it have to be 0.000 right at the lot lines, or can we be?
I think it's a zero. Whatever.
Is it zero? I, that's-
I think zeros are the most-
Yeah.
So, we may need to modify that as well, and with shielding, everything's gotta be direct down, and so I don't know if that changes things.
No, they can easily modify those to get that to work.
To the list. Mike Yancho? Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask to explain license plate counter?
The license plate counter or the?
Camera?
Yeah, so, based on, they sell monthly, I believe they're monthly passes, could be annually as well, but they recognize your license plate, so you just can drive right, right in. You don't even have to get out and put your card in. It'll read your license plate, it'll open the gate, and you can go right in. So, it's pretty, everything's very high-tech in these things, so.
Great.
Yeah. And then, if you don't have a monthly membership, there is a pay window, manned pay window that you can go pay and drive through that way, so.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Bush, anybody? I know my question about the, go ahead, Jay.
So, on an SUV, does it get the back of the tailgate?
Let us, let us-
Let's make that part of the motion.
Let us know when they, when you go through and-
I never get my, back of my tailgate done.
If you buy a monthly pass, I believe you can just turn right or left.
Right. And it'll miss it the next time. It's, it's a challenging spot.
Maybe go through backwards, I don't know.
Yeah, it's, it's a challenging spot, I'm just joking. So, I do have another kind of goofy question. So, this site plan review went to you instead of the site plan committee?
Because of the special land use, we brought it before the entire planning commission. My recommendation, if you want to have it go before the site plan review committee for final approval, I'll look at it, and then I'll take it before the site plan review committee, and then we can file it that way if you'd like.
Well, I appreciate the findings that you had, you know, along those things. I just wanna know what was the nuance between the two. And then, so when you were saying you think you can do these, are you saying that with approval, these things will be done?
Uh, yeah. I didn't say anything that we cannot do.
Perfect. Just a clarification on that, so.
I'll clarify that. The engineering review talked a lot about the storm, which I believe goes through the county as well.
Right.
So, we'll have to work some issues out with the county, because our grade, grading, there's limitations to our storm, but we don't have a problem with the system, just the depth of cover of our pipe, which we're gonna provide a spec that says this pipe will meet the standard.
Perfect. And then, the only other one, you were talking about the landscaping of Evergreen and the front on the Saginaw Street. So, do we, do we also, at the same time, gonna have that back far enough so that when people are coming out, and it's not so much back far enough where it's planted of where it's going to grow to, that's under control, too?
Correct. So, it needs to be right up against, within reason of the edge of the parking lot.
Right.
I don't want it out at the road, we want it right up against the parking lot, so it doesn't, I know people are gonna back up and may back into it, but it's gonna need to be maintained and, you know, trimmed and things like that.
There's just those times where you plant something for shielding, and all of a sudden, you can't pull out and see left and right when you're trying to pull out, so.
If you look at the site plans, there's, if, if that was the case, then there, we'd work out something else to where no sightline issues would be affected.
Perfect. Thank you.
If I may, my recommendation would be to specify 30 inches, which is about the average height of your headlights. That way, you can still see over it from your window. But we'll do what we can to keep it up close. We got a sidewalk in there where the vacuums sit as well, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Baker?
I'd like to build on Mr. Hoffman's comment. I drive pickup trucks, and the tailgates never get really clean. So, I think SUVs, pickup trucks need to be addressed in this, rather than cycled through a half a dozen times.
A motion to put this on the table, this, until that ends? Okay. Looking at the property, again, like I said, you answered my question about the dumpster being in front, and I kinda see how that makes sense, and we got drive-through bays on the backside of this, is that what those are?
Yeah.
Auto wash? Self-wash, okay. I like how the building shields that, so. Under anything, Mr. Bush, or?
Nope, I'm good. I'm ready for a motion if you are.
Okay. Looks like we got a couple of things left to cover, and mixed our motion include what Jeremy pointed out, the building max height of 30 feet needs to be verified, is that correct?
Yeah, so, all of the-
Looks like that will be.
Documentation that I provided, plus the update to the photometric plan, to be 0.0 at all lot lines.
Okay. Number of parking spaces for stacking identified and marked? You said you wanted those marked in the parking lot as well?
I'd like some more directional arrows in the parking.
Okay, and I agree with that one, too. And we talked about the light, the shielding, detention pond ownership, and that was addressed as well, so, okay. Mr. Bush?
Yep.
You want to make a motion?
You're ready?
You had your hand up, you ready to make a motion?
No, I'm, I'm ready to do a motion if you're ready. I also did, before I do, I also did go through the site plan review checklist. I think Jeremy did a spectacular job.
Yes.
So, I will make a motion to approve a preliminary site plan for Tommy's Express Car Wash. With that being said, I want to add to make sure all of Jeremy's items are addressed in his review letter without stating every one of them. And then, also, the engineering review dated January 14th from Row, there are 11 items that also need to be addressed. And again, I don't wanna go through every one. again, I don't want to go through every one, but as long as we get that stated in the motion.
As long as all that's attached to your motion, Jeremy can provide that.
And that's fine. Again, that's all going to go through county, so he won't get the final site plan approval until all of those letters and approvals are given to us anyways, so.
Okay.
And also, it looks like, looking at sheet A-200, there's two separate heights and actually three, it's a pretty elaborate elevation. It shows Parapet A, which is a tall tower being 28-foot tall max, and the shorter tower being 24. So I don't know if you guys got all that in your packet, but it looks like it's under the 30.
It's like 130 feet, okay. Mr. Banderski, you had a comment?
Going back to Jeremy's and Paul's, that when you state the things in the letters, state the dates of the letter so that we're very specific. Thank you.
Okay. And with that, do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, let me call.
Yes. Clarification. Paul mentioned a preliminary site plan review. Is that what we're doing? We'll have a follow-up after all the other items are met.
I'd like your recommendation where you'd like the final site plan. Would you like it with site plan review, or would you like it in front of the full board?
Okay. I'm good with, with site plan review, because like I said, Jeremy did a fantastic job.
It'll be minimal, like this will be the minimal things that we're really going to be looking at going forward, so the three of us plus myself can do that final approval if you'd like.
I'm comfortable with that, and I was ready to proceed with that. So thanks for bringing up that comment though. Okay.
Just so I, just so I understand the motion then, Mr. Bush made the motion to approve preliminary site plan, subject to the items that need to be resolved in Mr. Smith's January 11th, 2011 correspondence, and also items to be resolved either at the county level or township level in the Row letter dated January 14th, 2022. And then also, the follow-up for the next stage of review will be at the site plan review committee as opposed to the full planning commission. Is that, is that essentially your motion?
Absolutely.
And that's the one that I seconded.
If everyone's clear on that, Mr. Laddie, you're comfortable and we'll proceed with the row call on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
There you go.
Yes.
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 Yes. Myself, yes.
Yes.
Banderski, yes. Jay Hoffman, yes. Paul Bush, yes. Okay. Motion passes?
Eight-zero. Passes eight-zero.
Eight-zero. We'll note that, thank you. That one next statement on the, tonight's agenda then is the zoning case 670 Randy Weiss Realty, Weissman, I'm sorry. Zoning case, public hearing from office service to flexible development one. Do a public comment on this one as well before we go any further. So do we have any public comment on this?
Public hearing.
It's public hearing?
Yep.
Would it be, would it be more convenient to have a presentation from the applicant?
Yeah, that would be, correct, I'm sorry. Let me jump ahead, yeah.
Maybe Mr. Smith's review.
Because that may answer questions the public may have. Thanks. Sorry, I jumped ahead myself there.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Pat Parker from Simon Figurant Parker, I'm the attorney for the applicant. And Randy Weiss and Chris Weiss are here, the principals of the applicant. They are the new owners of the...
Please state your address.
5206 Gateway, Flint, Michigan.
Thank you.
They are the new owners of the Mercedes BMW Toyota dealership on Holly Road. And I'm going to have Randy come up in a second and explain to you why they, immediately after they buy it, need additional space. Their manufacturers are pushing them to get some additional space. They have under contract this vacant property that we're here tonight looking for initial steps on rezoning. It's been a parcel which has been vacant since at least the 1960s. It's presently zoned office service, but there's been no activity. They haven't been able to sell it, they haven't been able to lease it, haven't been able to develop it. And so we are here trying to get the approvals that we will need to develop it into what Randy's going to describe as a Toyota dealership on that property. We met with the township, and at the time, I thought we would need to request rezoning to general commercial, even though I knew that the future land use map identified this as flexible development one. We were told that the flexible development was going to get off the drawing board and probably going to become an actual zoning classification, and that would be the appropriate vehicle for us to move into that. So we actually filed an application initially to ask for rezoning to general commercial, and we amended that with being told that flexible development was going to be actually on the same meeting. And so we realized that we're, we're traveling parallel and maybe an inch ahead of the actual, we're asking for rezoning to a classification which doesn't exist today, but we're hoping that it'll go forward and do that. I'd like to have Randy come up and tell a little bit about why you guys need to, all of a sudden, after you bought the dealerships a couple months ago, need more space.
Okay, thank you. Hi, Randy Weiss. My address is 12511 Margaret Drive in Fenton. The dealership is 9099 Holly Road here in Grand Blanc. Lived in Grand Blanc forever. My, my kids went to Grand Blanc, and we always wanted to get back here. Well, I worked at Alsera's for 30 years, so I've, I've been around forever. We always wanted to get back to Grand Blanc, and of course, not going to buy Alsera's. So we talked to Dave for a long time. We knew, we knew we wanted, would come back, and we knew what the dealership did, and we never dreamt, when you look at it from the road, that it's not big enough for what we want to do. I mean, it's, it's a big building, but based on what we need to do and what the manufacturers want us to do, it's nowhere near big enough. He rents a, or he did, we do now, rent a piece of property down the road that we park some cars at. But we need to split at least one of the manufacturers. My, my decision was to take Toyota out of there and put, and leave Mercedes and BMW in, in the existing building. Now, you try to do it as economically as possible, and to find a piece of property, you know, five, six miles away, it just, it just takes away from the economy, so what we can do if we're, if we're close. For, you guys, everybody knows exactly what I'm talking about, where the dealership is, where the property is. And even though I'd love it to be right next door, it's still across the street and down the road, but we can still, we can still operate that way. Talked to, talked to Toyota, told them what we were doing. The property, the size fits. I've got some, you know, because I know we're nowhere near that point yet, but I have some drawings of what they want. And I'm going to be back here a lot of times because both the other manufacturers are going to want me to do a lot of, a lot of other things to, to the building even after I move one out. But that's, that's kind of where we're at. The property's been there forever. I tried to buy it about six, seven years ago. It was eight years ago when Volkswagen wanted to come to town, but the people wouldn't sell it. They wanted a 99-year lease. I won't, will not lease a piece of property and put a, you know, $2, $3 million building on somebody else's property. I don't know what happens, you know. So I needed to buy it. We finally bought, we finally bought it contingent on, you know, how many meetings we have to go to, but on contingent on the meetings and trying to get, trying to get this done. It works out best for us, and, you know, hopefully it works out for everybody. But that's, that's kind of, that's kind of, you know, gets you up to speed of where we're at. We're no farther than this meeting right now. And hopefully, we can, we can go forward. We get as many, you know, comply with everything we have to comply with. If you could look at some of my other facilities around, around the county, if you go to, if you go to Fenton, look at the Buick store, I mean, it, we comply with everything. I, I know my son gets mad when I talk about things like this, but we got approval to put the, put the used car lot in, and we needed 28 trees, and they wouldn't give me a C of O because I only had 27. So I went and got the 28th tree myself. And so, you know, and all I can say is, we are going to be extremely good neighbors. We, we really are. Like I said, I know, I know the area, I know the town. I know, you know, what's on Holly Road. If I'd have bought this store three, four, or five years ago, there probably wouldn't be a Taco Bell there, or there might not be a Culver's there because I would have just gone across the street. But now that they're gone, the only piece of property, at least at this time, that really works for us at all is the piece we're talking about. So I'm, I'm willing to answer any question anybody can ask, and if I don't know the answer, I'll probably still make something up, but.
You want to bring this to the public first? A couple of you just walked in. Public comment, no? Okay. Close public comment. Jeremy, do you have anything to add to this?
This is zoning case number 670, vacant land on Holly Road. The Weisman Realty LLC Group is the applicant. Parcel number 12-22-300-005. Upon review of the zoning change request referenced above, some of my findings is below. Subject property is located on Holly Road between McCandish and Cook Road. Proposed parcel is approximately 5.4 acres. The applicant's intent to resume the parcel from OS, office service to Flex One, flexible development one. The purpose of the change is for future development. Surrounding properties to the north is office service, east and south are also office service, and to the west is MHP, manufactured housing park. No site plans have been submitted for review at this time. There's several criteria for the rezoning consideration. The first one is consistency with goals and policies of the future land use map of Grambling Township Master Plan. The planning commission and township board adopted the 2021 master plan and future land use map in September of 21. This request is consistent with the newly adopted future land use map and master plan. Compatibility with the physical site and geological and hydrological. There appears to be no conflict between the proposed development and physical condition of the site. Item C, evidence that the applicant cannot receive a return on the investment incumbent on the applicant to provide this information. D, the compatibility of all potential uses allowed in the proposed zoning district with surrounding uses and zoning in terms of land suitability and impacts on environment. Please refer to the list of permitted uses in the Flex One district that you just approved today, or recommended the township board today. The capacity of township utilities and services sufficient to accommodate the uses permitted in the requested district. There appears to be adequate services and utilities to serve the proposed use. Compatibility of the street system to safely and efficiently accommodate the expected traffic generated. Property fronts on Holly Road, which is a major thoroughfare with a center turning. Item G, the apparent demand of all types of uses permitted in the requested zoning district in the township in relation to the amount of land the township currently zoned and available to accommodate the demand. The applicant intends to develop the property with a use that is permitted or is a special land use within the Flex One district. Item H, boundaries of the requested rezoning district are reasonable in relationship to surroundings and construction on the site. This parcel is large enough to meet the dimensional requirements of the zoning ordinance. Item I, the rezoning is appropriate, the requested zoning district considered to be more appropriate from the township perspective than any other district. This newly adopted future land use map indicates Flex One is an appropriate zoning for this area. If the request is for a specific use, is rezoning the land more appropriate than amending the list of permitted or special land uses? The rezoning is not for a specific use. The parcel will allow permitted and special land uses in the Flex One district. Item K, the request of rezoning will not create an isolated and unplanned spot zone. This rezoning does not create a spot zoning due to the future land use map. Item L, the request has not previously been submitted within one year. The request has not been submitted within the past year. M and N are not applicable due to the request for other conditions or other factors deemed appropriate. So the planning and zoning department would support a recommendation or a conditional recommendation for approval to the township board based on the following reasons. The requested zoning is compatible with the surrounding land uses. And number two, the future land use map recommends for Flex One zoning at this location. Planning Commissioner's motion should be in the form of a recommendation to the township board. So I know we're going parallel. We just did the first leg of the...
Future land.
Future land, Flex, Flex One and Flex Two. So if you would, my recommendation would be a conditional, I've already discussed with Attorney Laddie, a conditional approval. On Tuesday, the 8th, next Tuesday, the township board will be seeing the Flex One and Flex Two zoning. So if you would allow for a conditional approval tonight, that would move this along. We wouldn't have to see this again.
Okay. Conditional upon the township board's approval of...
Correct. So if they, if they modify anything heavily, then we would have to come back and put this on hold until everything for the Flex One and Flex Two was fully addressed.
Makes perfect sense to me. Mr. Laddie, comfortable with that wording?
Agreed.
Our board?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Jeremy, I have a question on J. You know, are we, we purposely not mentioning what the intention is? I mean, Mr. Weiss is pretty clear in terms of it's for automobile dealership, but we're very...
By law, if somebody, if another applicant were to come in, they do not have to provide what they're intending to do. They're just for rezoning, not...
Well, I understand that, but the applicant in this case has stated that. And so when you say in here the rezoning is not for a specific use, it is for a specific use, this particular zoning request.
Sure. But if for some reason something happens down the road and this, the car dealership doesn't work, anything allowed in Flex One would be allowed on this property. I understand where, where you're going with it, but...
All right.
Yep.
Okay, Mr. Bush?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. First, I guess, living in Grand Blanc my entire life, it's nice to see some movement on this piece of property that I know has been sitting vacant at least my whole adult life, my whole life really. It's nice to see some movement. However, I appreciate Jeremy's thoughts. I sat on the board, and I'm not sure I'd like to see a recommendation for approval of Flex One when I haven't even approved Flex One. And that's just coming from a board member thinking, man, I don't know if I'd like to see that. Now, that might not be a hangup, but I'm just going to throw it out there. It would be a hangup for me. And I know, I know we want to expedite this thing, but as, like I said, as a previous board member, I, I wouldn't appreciate my planning commission giving me something before I approved a zoning in the first place.
We're going to give this to the township, pending that their approval on Zone 1 to first, okay?
The word conditional approval, doesn't that take care of that concern?
It does. And this is a great, you guys just made me think of this while you were talking. In fact, Mr. Banderski's comments were more akin to a conditional rezoning, right? Because he's, he's a signing of the use that was volunteered from the applicant to a particular parcel. But no, the condition in this case, and Mr. Smith is right, that if you, if you recommend approval of the rezoning in this district, anything goes in this district, right? Now, moving out to the district, the township board, first of all, has to say, yeah, we, we accept your recommendation to adopt the zoning amendment to install this flexible development language. And, and again, any, if you do affirmatively agree to recommend here, that is only going to be, as Jeremy points out, if they adopt this language in substantially, essentially the same language that it's presented to them. And to Mr. Bush's point, if they, if they feel they want to slow it down, then that's their prerogative. But it is interesting to see him, again, as, as Mr. Parker points out, but one's about an inch ahead of the other one.
Exactly.
But if you're comfortable moving it on, you're, I, I believe you're free to do that, and the township board's free to slow it down if they want to slow it down.
I'm comfortable with it. Again, speaking as a prior board member as well, I would, I would be able to distinguish the two as well on my agenda and decisions.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to build on Paul Bush's comment that I've been in Grand Blanc a long time too, and I've seen that property almost daily because I live on McCandish Road. But secondly, I also see the current dealership that Mr. Weiss owns, and it's a very nice-looking building. And so I would presume that it's going to, the site, once it's done, will also be a very beautiful addition to that Holly Road section.
And, and well-maintained, I might add. Thank you.
Absolutely. I mean, it's, it's going to be the newest design, and it's, it's going to be, you know, it's going to be approved, but it has to be approved by the manufacturer too, so I got to go through that. But no, it'll, it'll, nobody, nobody would be ashamed to look at it.
We're not ashamed to look at the car once.
One question, and going on with my topic of the previous request. One, I will just mention that I have found as I've gotten older, my father has gotten smarter. You mentioned earlier about your son talking about those things. So I, I know that my father's gotten smarter the older I get, so, which is a neat thing. And then two, on, on the page, so the pie-shaped or elongated pizza shape that we're talking about here is in red... about here is in red, is there a reason why the mobile home manufacturing park is also outlined for us on the page?
That's just showing the parcel lines.
The parcel lines?
Are you talking on the zoning?
Well, yeah. Because we're only talking about the pie shape, right?
Correct, in the blue.
We're not talking about the other shape that's, that's on this one.
Oh, I see what you're talking, okay.
They're, they're both red it out, like I'm supposed to be looking at both these sections, and we're really only supposed to be looking at the one, correct?
So, the boundary stands out a little bit on that, probably because of the color.
No, it's, it's red. There's a red outline on the green. I'm just making sure. We're only talking about the elongated higher pizza shape.
If you go to the next page where it's the Genesee County GIS page, just, just that, outlined in red.
Yep, just making sure.
Yep.
Thank you. And welcome.
Comment?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. He's, he's still, I've told him many of times.
Okay, then. With that, then we want to look for a motion to forward this to the township for their February 8th meeting, conditional on their approving the Flex 1 and Flex 2 zoning first. Do we have anybody willing to entertain such a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Yansho moved as stated, okay. I'll support. Do you have a question? Okay, we support, too.
Can we roll call that?
Yes, we will, we can roll call that. Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Ah, yes.
Yes.
Myself, yes.
Yes.
Yes. No, no, okay, we'll state one for no one.
I can make one concluding remark. When this was originally purchased from Grand Blank Township by Tom Gleason, who built the Mercedes BMW, I represent Tom Gleason, and David's dad represented the township, so we've been involved in this for a long time.
It's back a little bit, eh?
He's not getting smarter as he gets... My dad, no. I'm kidding.
Do you remember what it was Gleason? I remember when that was a field I used to play in as a little kid. Do you remember that, Peter? Okay. Where did I put my agenda? Committee reports.
I have nothing to report.
Report here, okay. Zoning, Jeremy, do you have anything to add?
Just so you know, Ms. Baim and I have been talking the last few weeks, months, regarding some, to some changes in the zoning ordinance. As you can see, I've got quite a few sticky notes of things that I'd like to...
Oh, yeah.
...see modified, so we're working through a list. We're trying not to give it to you guys, only one shot. We're going to try and ease you into it, because there's, there's quite a few, a lot of them are kind of minuscule, but some of them are going to require some discussion, so we're going to be starting that next month. And she'll be getting some information, and we'll, from that point, we'll discuss when we can have public hearings.
Plan review, no one here.
None? We haven't had one?
Nothing covered, okay. All right.